All right, everybody. Let's rise with pitch. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Daley.
Here.
Vice President Henderson.
Here.
Trustee Parr.
Here.
Trustee Schwartz.
Here.
And trustee Clements is absent.
I'm sure she's on her way.
I'm sure she is.
Yes, I believe she is. Okay, well, thanks for coming. I want to start with an announcement about something really important happening at the school this year, this week. We're having a heroin and opiate forum. It's sponsored by the PTA. They'll be showing a film called Chasing It, which is a documentary film about heroin use and addiction. We're really, we think it's really important, so we encourage everyone to come out and give it a look, see if you can. It's on Thursday, October 7th, at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. It's free of charge. Haldane has been a real partner with the Communities That Care Coalition in terms of just dealing with this, with this issue. We are looking forward to continuing to do that, and this is one of many things that the school is kind of up their sleeve. So come out and support that if you can. And the other thing I want to talk a little bit about is we've had some board continuing education going on in the past couple of weeks, so I thought it would be a good chance to just hear from our colleagues about what they've been up to, what we've been up to, and just share a little, a little bit about that. So maybe Margaret, I'll start with you. Margaret and Peggy attended a new board member forum. There's, every, every new board member has to undergo training. It happens in their first year. They have a whole year to do it. It's, of course, recommended to do it as soon as possible, otherwise you're lost all year. But there's governance training and there's fiscal training. There's kind of two parts to the equation, and that gives board members a baseline for what, what to expect and how to do their job. So Margaret, I know, went recently, so I thought maybe you could share your experience.
I went two weeks ago up to Albany. Peggy came for the first day, just the governance training, and I went for the governance and the finance training. It was an incredible experience. There were, it was a roomful, about 75 people from all over the state who were all newly elected. So they definitely cut it down to the chase at the very beginning and said, okay, so no question is a stupid question because all of you are in exactly the same place, so it made it a very safe place to ask all kinds of questions that everybody, oh, I'm sorry. All kinds of questions that everybody had been thinking and asking. All kinds of questions that people asked were relevant to everybody's schools. There were, it was all a lovely group of people. It was very easy to sit down with whoever was there to discuss all kinds of things at the table at breakfast, lunch, and dinner. It was, it was a really eye-opening experience. One of the things that they did say was that for as many hours as you put in as a board member, if you add those hours up and look at the normal curve when you have a new job, by the time you figure out what's going on, is right about the same time that your term ends. So it was very comforting to know that, I feel like a lot of times I'm in here, the more I find out, the more I know, the less I know. I, you know, and consider myself a very active and involved parent and really realize that there is so much more that goes on than I really knew. So it was a great eye-opening experience, so thank you for sending me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They do a good job. That's through Westchester-Putnam?
No, I did the, the ones from Nisba.
Nisba, right, right.
But there were a handful of people here. There was a woman from New Rochelle, a woman from Austin, a lot of them were from upstate, from the Finger Lakes.
Yeah, and I think the questions, it's, it's, the questions just keep coming from, from all of us, you know, it's like an ongoing learning experience.
The email, but I'm going to bombard you with emails. Don't take offense, but they were like, go back and ask this, go back and ask this. You will be the recipient of a lot of that.
Okay, I will make sure I check spam.
I'm glad you went to that. The other thing that we went to this week, last night, is Peter, Diana and I went to a Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association-sponsored event. I think it was called New Team, New Times Governance Workshop, which is what I have listed here as their title. Basically, it was about, you know, it was understanding that we all probably have new teams going on, like you kind of have a new team every year. And they were talking about the dynamics between board members and superintendents and how to make a board work well, and how to make the board superintendent relationship work well. And, I don't know, I'll just say a few things that came to me that I thought was interesting to share, and you guys can pipe in. One thing that I thought was interesting was this idea of trust from the public, which is something we've been talking about in our goals, right? This idea of transparency and trying to communicate with the public as much as possible. And something that came up around that fact was that, you know, people go to board meetings or they watch the board meetings, and so much of it is like us just approving things that they don't understand, right? And we're just saying yes, no, and because we all have this understanding kind of behind the scenes, and we've talked about it before we even get to a meeting often. And so one of the people that I was talking to at the table was saying, it's okay to have those conversations, you know, in public, instead of always feeling like you need to arrive at a board meeting ready to make decisions. That, that the conversations in public is really what will help the public get connected to what we're doing. And I thought that that was interesting. I feel like sometimes there's a little bit of pressure to feel like we're, we arrive knowing what we're doing. But we, we don't always need to, you know, we can be a little bit more open about our conversations. So that was, you know, one of many things that kind of struck me. I don't know if you want to share anything, Peter?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, that was the name, New Team, New Times. And I think the new times is a reference to the change that we're in the midst of right now. There was an acknowledgement that these are difficult times, and there are an increasing number of external forces at play that we have no control over, you know, whether it's Common Core, teacher evaluations, tax cap, unfunded mandates, a lot of these external forces at play. And we discussed how school boards are the key to stability within this environment of, well, what, what they called volatility, uncertainty, complexity, and ambiguity. So there's so much that's out of our control, but the one thing that we can do is build a strong governance team and, and allow the community a strong voice in the governance of, of the district. So that was a theme throughout the evening. And I think I certainly came away reassured that we still do have a lot of control over our local schools, and communities can shape their schools in a way that reflects their priorities and their values. Now, a lot of people, there were representatives from many districts in Putnam and Westchester. It seems to have been a popular, popular year for doing strategic plans.
Yeah, it seemed to have either just done it or was about to do it.
Yeah, so we spoke quite a bit about that. So we've recently completed our long-range plan, and like many other districts, we're, our goals will take several years to, to reach, and so people are wondering, well, how do we break that down into realistic, measurable, short-term goals? And I think that's what we've tried to do. We'll be talking about our board goals later today, and I think, and we discussed them at our last meeting, and that's what, something that we've tried to do. So we also talked a lot about communication, specifically about communication between the board and superintendent, and specifically about the, the board, board and the, and the community. And we discussed the benefits of clearly defined protocols between the board and the superintendent, and that was an interesting discussion because by defining a clear protocol, we ensure that board members get the information that they need, but also that everyone gets the same information. So, you know, it's not like somebody asks a question and, and gets an answer, but they're the only peoples that then have that, that have that knowledge. So it's very important that we establish protocols to ensure that everybody is equally informed.
There was one district that mentioned they had something like 35.
Yeah, Pelham.
Pelham, Pelham has like, a list of 35 steps and protocols of how you communicate with who about what, and, you know, and so it's like, that's one extreme. And then there's the other extreme of having no protocol, right?
Which is probably where we are.
Yeah, just a little bit more like, this is how we do it. So, you know, we were talking about, you know, where's the media, you know, where, where can you meet in between that and that? And Margaret, something you brought up, actually, when you and I were talking about how, you know, boards change so frequently that it's somehow, the, the culture of the board and the policy of the board needs to remain true, right? So that when, when the members change, the whole board doesn't like change its process, right? And that type of thing, like protocols of how do you communicate, how does the information get shared with the rest of the board, et cetera, et cetera? That, that would be great stuff to have like written down somewhere and hand it off and not just like in somebody's head.
Because we have very much of an, an oral tradition here where it's passed on by word of mouth, and messages can get lost in, in translation or, you know, you forget to pass the information on. So I, I think that would be a good exercise for us to go through, to try and come up with some, some just very basic, simple protocols that we just use as a, as a foundation. You know, there was another district that actually mentioned how they're using a shared Google Doc for communication between the board and superintendent. So rather than emailing individual questions and getting a reply emailed back, we post our questions to the Google Doc, and then Diana can answer them, and we all see everybody else's questions, and we see all the answers too. So that was, that was pretty interesting. Another district, interestingly, talked about how they've reorganized their agenda-setting meetings to include the board president and a rotating board member to ensure that every, every board member has the opportunity to, to benefit from the insights that you get from those kind of more informal information exchange-type meetings. So that's something that, that we've started doing this year, and feedback I've heard so far that, that it's, is that it's been beneficial.
That's it, yeah.
And, yeah, so we talked a lot about goals and the importance of including the public in the goal-setting conversation, which again is something that we did this time, which is a departure of what we've done from past practice, but I think, you know, I think I can speak for all of us in saying it was, it was extremely beneficial. I'm glad we did it that way. We got, you know, we were able to get some input from the public that, that was helpful to us. And similarly, you know, we'll be establishing our workshop schedule this evening, and there are many topics where the public will want to have a voice. So I hope we can find an effective way to communicate out what those topics are and when they're taking place without forcing somebody to go look through an agenda to find out what the topic of the day is. We certainly have the, the change in the school's start time coming up very soon, and I know that's going to be a very hot topic for everybody, so we want to make sure that people know, do we, we have that scheduled for?
October 20th.
October 20th, yeah. So we want to make sure that, that everybody out there knows that, that we'll be discussing it so they can come listen and, you know, have a voice in that. And similarly, we've already indicated that we're looking for, for a way for the student body to participate as well through their class representatives, so I hope we can find a way to, to make that happen too. And then finally, we talked about the role of the board and the role of the superintendent, and the need to find a middle ground between rubber stamping and micromanaging, and it's a challenge for, that many boards face. And so the, here's, I'm going to pass out to the board members one, a graphic that they shared with us last night, which for me at least, really sort of clarified what the distinction is. So the board is responsible for those high-level things like the vision, the mission, the goals, the policies, whereas the superintendent's responsibility is objectives, action plans, regulations, and procedures. So we're, the kind of questions that the board should be asking are the, the what, the why, and the how much type of questions, whereas the superintendent's responsibility is, is the how, the where, the when, the by whom, those implementation types of issues. But, but the umbrella across both domains at the bottom here is, is trust and communication. So as, as you were saying, we, we, we talked quite a bit about that last night. So it was, it was a great session.
And I think this was reflected in our book read that we did this past year, you know, the, the how, and it's a challenging role for the board, but how do you step back and be on the balcony, as the board, as the book kept saying, right? And be able to try to see all of the pieces without getting too interested in each individual piece in a way that is hindering that individual piece from coming to fruition? And that's, that, that's a challenging role, especially if you're a parent and who has, you know, a lot of information about those small, little detailed things that are going on and vested interest in them. So, yeah.
So, yeah, the one, the one recurring theme throughout the evening though was the involving the public, the community. And, you know, I think by opening up that conversation, it does mean that things will take longer. But personally, I think that's fine, and I would much rather take time to make sure everybody's on board rather than, you know, charging ahead and, and risking that we leave people behind.
Did you have anything else to add?
Sure. And as the third participant from our district, it was a little bit different for me because I was able to look, I, I listened. My role there was listening last night, and I tend, for the obvious reasons, to look through things with the lens of the superintendent, and last night I was able to look through the lens of a board member, which is different. And so I think that I was trying to, to hear the thoughts of board members, and they were very consistent, really regardless of the district that they were from. But the, the takeaway I left with was really an understanding that it seems like most districts in New York State, or at least in that region, in our region of New York State, have gotten to the point that we know that there are so many different factors that we're trying to juggle with all the time, that we're almost at the point that we're moving away from them as the primary focus, and we're starting to manage what we have to do in order to continue to move forward. And people are starting to shift their thinking back to where it needs to be, to education, to students, to conversations about education. And the things that we have to manage, we will do, and we'll do well, but we want to continue to keep the focus on students and learning. And so that was my takeaway last night, and I think we're all at pretty much the same place. And when I talk about the book recommendation I'm going to make, that's also a focus of that book.
So thank you to Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association for this workshop, but all the workshops that they offer. I mean, they offer a lot of opportunities for us to keep learning from each other. So we thank them. Okay, so that was kind of a long comment section, sorry, I guess. So we're going to move into Dr. Bowers's report.
Okay, I have a number of things to talk about. The first is our community leaders group, and for those of you who may have already seen the letter or the invitation that recently went out, we are starting a communication group of interested people throughout the community that can come in on probably a bimonthly basis to hear about some of the, the thoughts, the issues, the challenges, the initiatives, all the positive things that are going on in the Haldane School District, and get information that they, they may have questions about answered. And so we were, we're going to be holding our first community leaders group in probably mid-November, and if you do have an interest in being a part of it, we've had a number of people that have already signed up, please just email Lynda Dearborn or Diana Bowers at haldaneschool.org and let us know, and we'll put you on the list.
And you don't have to be an actual community leader, so it's not like you have to be the head of the PTA to attend, so you, you can be anybody.
You can be anybody that has an interest, which makes you a leader.
Anybody that has an interest, that's right.
Of, of our little district here. So we welcome anybody that does have an interest. The second area is something called the Superschool's Grant, and we've had a number of conversations in the district with the board and the administrators, and I know that a communication went to both the faculty of the high school and the union recently as a potential for us to apply for a grant called the Superschool's Grant. And there is funding out there right now for districts to apply. I can tell you it's probably going to be a long shot, but since we have our strategic plan and we have, we're moving in that direction anyway, we're considering applying for the grant. So as things unfold, we'll keep you posted and we'll give you more information, but we wanted to have it out there as we begin to, to talk about and have the conversation. As part of our strategic plan, you probably have heard that we are joining the New Tech Network, which is a group of like-minded districts throughout the nation that come together to really push deeper learning and authentic learning experiences in the classroom for our students. And part of what we do with the New Tech Network is we go out and see schools that have begun this process many years ago and are now working very fluidly with authentic learning experiences. So we are taking our first trip, it'll be to Albany, to Tech Valley High on October the 21st. We do have two slots for board members, if anybody would like to go.
What's the date?
That's the 21st of October. We will also take one in November. So we'll have spots, but if you would like to go and spend the day, we have, I think there are 18 people from the district, two board members, we're going to invite somebody from the foundation to go as well, and the rest will be faculty and administrators.
Do you have something like, that explains, this is just for our school?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have like something that explains the day or like a letter or something?
We can get that, certainly.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, would you write that down? Yes, we can get that.
Like, you know, on both sides.
Right. And if, the Tech Valley High, for those who may not have heard about it, it is a school that's actually run through Questar Bosse's, and it has, I think right now is about 20 to 22, somewhere in between, districts that send students there. And it's a school that has been project-based and wall-to-wall authentic learning for probably eight years at this point.
Is it CTE?
Uh, no, it's more, it's, it's, there are CTE components, but it's...
CTE, do you? Career and Technical Education.
But it's more of a kind of holistic interdisciplinary approach to teaching and learning everything. And it is, because it's a New York State school, it is, they are required to, the students to pass a Regents exams, just like any other high school in New York State. And they just moved recently, I think about a year ago, onto the SUNY Albany campus, and they're in the College of Nanoscience and Engineering.
It's an awesome building. It's really beautiful.
Yeah, it's very scientific, sci-fi kind of looking building. So we'll get you that information, and if you would like to go on October 21st, there are slots, and if you would like to go in, in November, we'll also have a couple of slots available, so we'll send that information to you. If there are people in the general public that have an interest in going, let us know too. And we, if we do take a trip, maybe we can, in November, we definitely will be, maybe have a spot or two, and then if we take another one, we'll keep people on the list. So the next, we have our new pupil personnel director and director of innovative instructional practices, Ellen Hackett, will be offering a meet and greet, and we're going to offer a meet and greet, an evening one and a, and a morning one. So if you have an interest in coming in and meeting our new PPS director, and I will be there as well, Tuesday, the 20th, from 6:00 to 7:00 is the meet and greet, and there will be flyers that are going out about these dates, and the 21st, from 10:00 to 11:00. And they will be in the maker space. So if you do have an interest, please come out and, and get to know Ellen, and I'll, and we'll be happy to answer any questions about our PPS department.
And the 20th, that's right before our board meeting, so if you guys want to piggyback your evening with school board stuff, that will be our workshop meeting on the possibility of a later start time. So it's, it's a good school board evening.
Yes. We have information regarding the land sale, and for those of you who have been keeping track of the Cedar Street land that the district has had on the market, we are going to contract, and our attorney and the attorney of the buyers have, they have been back and forth, and it, the, the finalized contract will be coming to the board for review, and probably within the next, hopefully, day or two.
So just to be clear for everybody that's listening, that's the James Pond property?
Correct. And the, the way in which it's actually being sold, the district is retaining ownership of James Pond, and what originally was going to be a three-parcel piece of land that was sold, it will be a two-parcel piece of land that will be sold, and the district will retain ownership of James Pond. Bless you.
Thank you.
Monolith Solar, for those of you who have been watching, all of our buildings now have solar panels on the roofs. We have the district, with the exception of Mabel Merritt, we have the district office and the bus garage, the high school. Both of those projects are now making electricity. The main building, the big building here, we have solar panels that are on the roof and will be hooked in next weekend, this coming weekend. And they're, they have to change the transformer so the, the electricity can flow into the transformer, and that will be happening over Columbus Day. So we should be going online with all our buildings very soon.
Great.
So that's coming to an end. I would like to recommend a book, as we did last year, we read a book together, and I'd like to recommend another book. It is by Andrew Hargraves and Michael Folan called Professional Capital. And this is, this was a recommended book and was given to the members of the Putnam Northern Westchester Curriculum Council, and I'm a member of that. And as I started reading the book last week, there was so much information and such timely and important information within that book, I thought I should recommend it as our book read. And what it is basically is trying to keep the focus where it belongs in this time of change, tumultuous change as far as the state and the country goes. We're about to see another big shift in, in leadership at the federal level, where the commissioner, where the commissioner of New York State that recently left is now going to be taking over a federal slot, and so that's going to be interesting to see how that shifts. We have a new commissioner here, we have some new changes, and we have to keep going with what's important and what we believe in, and so this book also helps us keep that and develop the professional capital that's going to allow us to educate our students well. So I'd like to recommend that book.
You were talking a little bit about how best to schedule that book read. I think Evan, I remember you saying, I was talking about it a little bit, but there's, last year's book read, you know, lost a little steam along the way because other stuff, you know, kind of got in its way. But I don't remember what we had agreed to as a good process.
I think just speeding up the process, maybe.
Is that what we were talking about?
Yeah, because, you know, we, we spaced it out that we would end it at the end of the year, but just, end of the year is always crazy, so just let's, just try to, let's try to finish it by March, you know, so this way, because the end of the year, you know, we're going to be hit with all this other stuff, so just kind of speed up the process of, of the read, maybe more than two chapters at a time, or, you know, whatever it is.
Okay, more homework.
Yeah.
More homework.
It's not a real long book either, but it has a lot in it, so does that sound like something?
You know, I mean, because they, we kind of fell short on it, yeah.
Yeah.
It sounds, I mean, given the changes and ongoing changes at both the state level and the federal level in terms of policies and who's leading what and what's happening, I think that's really very important to keep in mind on really what's the central business of the task at hand, and, not that those things aren't, aren't important, but helping to keep the focus where it belongs.
And it's very easy to get sucked into the, you know, kind of whirlwind that gets created, and you have to make concerted effort to really focus and continue to focus on the things that matter. Okay, so I should order it?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, good, thank you. Here we have...
Here, we have a couple of topics that will be at our next Board of Education work session. Our, our district auditors will be coming in to present their audit, their annual audit for the board and for the community. So, if you have an interest in hearing about our internal auditors letting us know how we're doing and the types of controls we have for the district, that would be the time to come. And we will...
So, it's the external audit?
The external audit.
Yeah, this is our...
The financial statement review.
Okay.
So, is the, Evan and Peggy have said the audit committee met?
We meet on Thursday.
To review the draft?
On Thursday.
Thursday, you're going to review the draft? Excellent.
Thursday is the meeting.
Yep.
Are we going to get the draft?
The draft, yep, it's, it's in.
Before the, or before the meeting?
Mm-hmm. We also, as, as you know, the controllers audit has been in progress for the last couple of months. And right now, there is a hiatus and the report will be written. And is he going to be coming in and doing an exit interview with us?
Yes. Yeah, I communicated with him today. He's not sure when. They have a little bottleneck of audits that they're finalizing. So, he, he's thinking it might not be for a couple of months yet.
So, but his time within the district is, has come pretty much to an end at this point?
Yes.
And then he'll be writing the report. So, please...
Do you miss him?
Go back to normal, right? You've got a double whammy with the state audit and the external audit running simultaneously. So, yeah, so, thanks a lot for keeping your head above water.
Yep. So, we will also be discussing the topic of an early, a later actual start time for the district for next year. And recently, the administrative team came together and we looked at two possible options. And one, and we listed the issues that we would have to contend with in order to make it happen. And one, as we've said before, is probably going to be a lot more realistic than the other, but we will present both to you. And we'll be seeing if this is something we want to continue to have a discussion about.
On that topic, is there something that you might be able to post in advance of the meeting on the website so that people can have a look at it and come prepared to ask their questions or?
Yeah, we can do that. Linda's typing up the notes that we took at, at this point, and we can put the notes up. I think it's going to be a much richer understanding when you hear us discussing it.
Yeah, I was just thinking something just real, real high level, just to, just to give people an idea of what, what, what the thinking is.
Or maybe even, because it's a recommendation from, like, the CDC probably has information on it and the American Association of Pediatrics.
Yes.
Maybe rather than, I mean, that might be a good place to start because those sites may have been developed for the public. That's just a thought.
Last year, we did post the articles from both of those groups. Well, actually, the CDC article came out afterwards, but we have posted that as well. But yes, we can post that, we can post what our discussion is that's just particular to Haldane and the specifics that we talked about. And, you know, as I said, one is much more realistic than the other, but we did a switch and a swap. One is we would switch start times, and the other is if we were to swap the elementary and the, the middle high school start times, kind of flip it around. And that ended up being much more problematic, but we'll talk about it at the next meeting.
So, maybe both, both, both suggestions of posting of material is a good one. The material and the overview very broadly of what we're talking about.
Right. And then the last on my list is that on November the 3rd, as we continue to talk about governance, we will have our attorney coming, and Mike Lambert will come in to talk to us a little bit about governance. And that will be done in what we're going to call a mini-retreat. It's going to be one of the one-hour sessions before the board meeting. We'll have dinner and we'll sit and talk about, and he can give us recommendations on the best practices in governance. So, that's it.
Any questions for Diana from the board about anything that we just talked about? So, let's take a moment now to just have communication from the public. Is there anything that anyone would like to ask or share?
I have questions. I don't know if now's the time or later's the time. I don't know which.
I think now's the time.
I don't know which.
Come on up. Yeah.
Same question I ask every year. I, I think the superintendent doesn't know I am, but I went to school here.
Come to the microphone. Yeah, just so that everyone can hear.
Went to school here, graduated here, leaving in 80, 73? Anyway, my main question is, being the school taxes came out, what was the, the school tax increases? I noticed I got my taxes and normally, hey, Michael, 40, 50, depending on what you're assessed for, but I noticed they like tripled. What, what caused, what caused the, I know the cap is 2%, right? So, what did they go up? And I know you have to wait till September. Even though you vote on a budget in May, don't you have to wait till September to see what you actually?
Well, the equalization rates come out in August.
So, what you vote on in May isn't really, in reality, what comes out in September. That all depends on what happens in September, right?
Well, it happens with the equalization rates. We see what, what part of the community pays what percent.
So, how much did they go up?
Well, I think that we, we understood that you were going to have questions this evening. So, Ann did a little preparation, and there are three things, and she can explain it better than I, but there are three things that actually were included in the tax increase. One was the increase in our taxes. And that's part, and that actually will, you'll get that back in a rebate check from the state, as you did last year. The second is that the STAR exemptions changed.
Well, I saw that.
Yeah.
You got less from the STAR program.
Right, and that's, that's an Albany issue, that's not ours. And so, I, we don't know why or how, but we know that there have, there were changes in STAR.
Right. I, I think I called it down about that. Anyway, go ahead.
Yep, and then the third piece is that the, the voters voted in additional taxes for the library in town.
I saw that, yep.
And so, I, all three of those were included in the, the increase in your taxes.
So, without the library and the STAR program, how much?
So...
It was, it was 2%, right? That's the tax gap.
Well, actually, it was a little bit lower. What was the tax levy increase of the, when it all was said and done?
The tax levy increase was a 2.7% increase, but the tax rate increase for Phillips Town for this year was 1.78%. So, the school tax portion...
Right, that's...
That the budget is responsible for was 1.78%.
Right.
Of an increase.
So, that's not counting the library and...
Right, and then in addition to that, what impacted your increase was that 1.78% was the library tax, which was about $20.
Right.
And then about $67 of, of the increase was for the decrease in the STAR program.
So, you, so basically, you have to take the STAR program, which you got less there, and the library, and minus that, and that would give you what, basically, your...
The increase in taxes.
So, why can't, it, it just boggles my mind. People are being taxed out of this town because of school taxes. And I, I don't understand, I don't understand that at all. It's just something I could never, I could never understand. What, why? I mean...
I don't know if I can answer that, but, exactly as you're stating it, but I can tell you that I certainly, last year with what I went through with the board and the community as far as the tax increases, we were under the tax cap.
Right.
And I, and from my understanding, all the prior years, they were under the tax cap.
Right, they were. I mean, no, I mean, you got a tough job. Don't get me wrong. It's probably, it's not easy doing this stuff. I gave you a lot of credit, but, I mean, it comes to the point where people are being taxed out of this town because they can't afford these, these taxes. And I've, comments like, well, if you don't like it, move. Well, no, to me, that's not the answer. If you don't like it, move. Why, why can't, once in a while, you have, a year where you don't have a tax increase at all? I, I don't, I don't understand.
Well, the net result this year is you don't have a tax increase because you do, you, you'll be getting that 1.78% back.
As was the case last year.
Right, it was, yeah, right.
Well, I mean, there are obligations that a district has, and there's inflation, and there's contracts, and there are all the other things that go into the calculation.
I mean, as far as mandates, I know the school has a lot of mandates that the state has to, you know, you don't have a choice. But it, but if the state, the state is mandating these things, the state should pay for them, not the taxpayer. Don't you have a lot of mandates, the state says, well, you got to do this, 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 this? Do you get reimbursed for it?
In many cases, no.
That's, so, that's, the state should reimburse you any mandate that's, you should be reimbursed. But, like I said, I'm just, I just don't understand how, yes, there is people in this town that, sure, they make $100,000, $150,000, $150,000, $300,000, it's, it's not an issue. But a lot of people don't make that kind of money, say 50, 60, 70, and, and the taxes are just, I know people that got to move because they can't afford to pay school taxes. And to me, that should not be. But it just seems, I, I don't understand. What, what, and it's like, how much money you get from the state? It seems, it seems to me, no matter, no matter how much money that the school gets from the state, they could give you a billion dollars next year in state aid. And I'll bet you, I'll bet you, you'd raise the taxes the following year. For some, whatever reason, you would have a rate increase. It, it just seems like, it just seems like no matter how much money you get from the state, it's, it's never enough. So, I'm like, I mean, where's it going to end? How much are people going to be taxed? I ask the same question every year. And now it's getting to the point where these taxes are getting out of control. I don't know. How do you pay 5, 10, 15, 4, 5, 6, 7, $8,000 in two school taxes? Everybody, you know, everybody shakes their head, yeah, 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 but it, it doesn't change. And I'm just, every year, I come over here and complain about it, and I don't know.
We appreciate your comments, Joe. We appreciate your, your perspective. It's a complicated issue that we don't have all the answers to.
Once in a while, maybe you can have a 0% increase. I don't know.
We do work very hard, Jody.
Oh, no, no.
To control costs as best as we possibly can.
I give the board a lot of credit. It's not, it's not an easy job doing this stuff. I agree with, I give you, I give you a lot of credit. But when people are getting taxed to where they can't afford to, not all people, when they can't afford to live in the community, they have to move because of that, I've got, that's, to me, that's a problem. It's sad. It's shame. It's disgusting. I don't know.
Well, come back and see us again at budget time and give us your input then. And you can, you can make specific suggestions on where you think we might be able to make sensible cuts that would, that would result in a lower overall cost.
I can give you one suggestion, start from the top, one, one suggestion. Got you? The teacher salaries. Instead of, they make, I'm sure a lot of teachers are making 70, 80, 90, $100,000, and whatnot. And, and if, if things are that bad this year, let's tell them I'm not getting a raise. I mean, my job at IBM, I had three, four, five years without raises. And they tell, if you don't like it, there's the door. You're making $80,000, so you don't get a raise. Making $80,000 is better than not getting a raise, but that doesn't seem to happen. Every year is the same, it's the same thing.
Thanks, Joe.
You know what I mean?
Okay, well, just to be clear during our last...
Okay.
No, come on up in the...
That's my person.
No, yeah. This is really not my thing.
Just to be clear though, just speaking on behalf, Anna Pierce, yeah. Speaking on behalf of the teachers, just so that you know, because maybe you probably don't know this, during our last contract negotiations, we actually took a pay cut. Like, we reorganized the pay salary to save the, help the community and to save some teacher jobs. So, we did take a pay cut.
I'm glad, I'm glad.
And I'm sure you just didn't know that, so I just wanted to clarify.
I'm glad.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that we did take a pay cut.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that was entirely accurate.
Well, we reorganized the salary schedule, meaning that by the time those people who are already at the top now, those of us who aren't at the top will make, get there, you know what I'm saying? Like, less increments.
You made an inaccurate statement, so I just...
But I don't really think it was inaccurate because the people who are at the top right now, myself included, I won't make the, like, you know what I'm saying? Like, it won't get there in the same amount of time. So, the amount of money they're making now, I'll never make, if you do the math.
You're not getting the increase that you were expecting.
Correct. Like, we reorganize, maybe I'm saying it wrong.
That's different than a pay cut.
Well, we reorganized the salary schedule, so I don't think I'm getting that money later.
Right, but just to clarify, that a pay cut would mean like, oh, I'm making $100 today, but tomorrow I'm going to make 90. That would be a pay cut.
Well, I was supposed to get a $2,500 pay increase, and I got $1,000. So, regardless, I don't want to get into the numbers. I just wanted you to know that we're trying to work with the board and the community. I didn't want you to think...
Well, I didn't know that.
Oh, yeah, okay, that was really my only point, is that we, we are doing our desperate best to work with the board and the superintendent and the community together. That was really my only point. That was really it.
I think once in a while, the school could have a 0% increase to help the taxpayer out, because it's getting to the point where, I mean, I don't mind paying my fair share of taxes, believe me. I don't have any kids. I feel I shouldn't be any taxes. But it's getting to the point where, when people have to move because of school taxes, that's a sad state of affairs.
Okay, good. I think we've, I think we've heard your...
No, it's not going to...
I think we've heard your concerns.
It's not going to do any good. I'm just spinning my wheel. It's not going to change anything.
It does bring up a good point, though, as far as with these changes. Is it, is it maybe something that we should, because probably people will look at their taxes and be like, wow, that was a big tax increase this year, as far as the, because not taking, thinking about the library and not thinking about the STAR. So, should, should we consider maybe sending like a notice, just explaining that if the, the increases were not all based on, on the tax rate?
Yep. I think that's a good idea.
No, not you, I mean, but...
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I mean, I, I mean, I'm a property owner and, and I'm on the board, and I didn't even realize that. So, I would imagine that a lot of people out there will just see the, the bottom line and see like, oh, wow, school taxes went up. So, I think a, a letter explaining that would be a good idea.
Most people don't complain about it. They just pay it as if, I'm not like...
No, that's, I'm sure most people notice it. They may not come to a board meeting, but at least if they notice it, they should, should know what happened.
Okay, good. Any other communication from the public? Okay, consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion about the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on September 15th, 2015? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda financial, may I have a motion, please?
Motion.
I'll second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Any discussion? We are approving a lot of substitutes, which is a good thing, because we needed them. So, I don't think there's anything else of interest. Diana, did you have anything you wanted to say about anybody? Anything?
No, I'm, most of, most of it is pretty clear. There was just, you'll see a very slight increase for our ESL teacher, and that was just simply because we've had some new students move in. And so, it's, she's still part-time, but just a little bit more part-time. But other than that, it's just pretty straightforward.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Going into some unfinished business. Going into some unfinished business, we talked about our board goals at the last meeting and since then, we've, we kind of set them at the last meeting, but we've had some time to articulate them a little bit more via email. Is there any further discussion from the board? Does anybody have anything they wanna share about it? I'll read them out, maybe just the, the board goals for 2015-16. Number one is to support the effective implementation of the reorganized administrative team and the district's leadership team. And we have some bullet points about how we do that and all of this will be on the website. Number two is to support the effective implementation of the strategic plan's goals, so that they result in improved educational opportunities for all students. We've spent a lot of time, energy and money developing the strategic plan and we wanna make sure we move it forward. Number three, create an improved communication channel with the public. And number four, maintain fiscal responsibility through a difficult budget year. Maybe that should say through a expected difficult budget year. We could have a windfall that we don't know about. But those are our four main, our main issues. We have bullet points with, within each of them. The board has also developed some assessment tools so that we can make sure that these goals are actually being met and we can talk about them. We also discussed not waiting till the end of the year to have a conversation about this, but they're living goals and we will have more, like a formal kind of conversation about it in maybe February or January or something, just to touch base about them. Any further, anything about them? Anybody?
I think they look good at this point.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too, thank you.
So they will live on our website for the public to see. And Dr. Bowers, the next step is for Dr. Bowers to create her goals and she does that with this as the framework, as, as a starting point, to make sure that they're aligned.
Correct.
The next thing to discuss is the board workshop topics, which we also touched based on last meeting. And there's kind of a, a proposed schedule here for everybody to look at. On October 20th, which we've said a million times, we're gonna talk about the later start time, not the earlier start time. And then in November, we started, we talked about putting the before-after-school conversation there because we felt like that was kind of connected to the later start time conversation. We do need to have some sort of decision made by December on that topic, so we'll put those two together. We talked about the solar energy performance report, five years facilities report, happening in December as a prep for budget season. January is the test score analysis, the discussion of educational initiatives, you know, what is and what is the difference between, all of them, Common Core Reform Agenda, RTTT. February, the technology report, also because we'll be in budget season at that point and that's a part of the budget conversation, what's working, what's not working, what do we wanna change or add for this year. March, we're expecting budget workshop, the 19th of April, we wanted to do a strategic plan progress report. May, we'll talk about the APPR. It may be the same APPR that we currently use, it may be a new one, we're not sure. Regardless, it's a good thing for everybody to understand. And then in June, we'll be doing a drug prevention communities that care discussion.
So for June 21st, my eyes, usually that meeting, we do the, the, you know, resignation, I don't know if we're gonna do the, if we're gonna now do the tenure in the fall and the resignations in the spring.
Right.
But usually we do the, the resignations there, so I guess it depends-
The retirements.
Right, retirements. So I guess it depends on the numbers. I mean, could we do both? Is that, so just-
That's a good point. This past year, we didn't have a lot of retirements, or we had like one, we had like two big ones, right?
Right.
And it kind of was not a big deal, like they couldn't, I think only one of the two could be here.
Well, Miss Contini couldn't come here, yeah, a bunch of them weren't here, so I guess it, it depends.
But it's some, that's a good thing to keep in mind, that would be kind of a strange juxtaposition-
Yeah, yeah.
-of meeting topics.
Just a thought, maybe, but, you know, depending on, we can maybe do it at the, at the June meeting.
The June meeting.
Yeah, if we have to. It's usually a quiet, after-
The June meeting could be-
The June meeting is usually quiet, budget's already been done and-
Yeah, that's a good point, thank you.
Depending on the passing of the budget, of course.
We can be flexible, yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea, bring that one forward.
Yeah.
A couple of weeks to the, to the beginning of that month.
Yeah, so it's sort of giving that date open.
So we'll, we'll move this from the 21st to the earlier meeting.
Yeah. How's it looking to anybody? Is there any questions, concerns, anything? I feel like it looks pretty good. Guys, good?
Yeah.
There's a lot of stuff to get into, we have a lot of things that we wanted to cover.
Yeah. And I think Peter's suggestion of making sure we publicize what the workshop topics are, so people can attend board meetings or watch board meetings that they're particularly interested in is a good one. Okay, any further communication from the public? Yes?
Are you voting on that too tonight?
Do we need to vote on them?
We have to adopt the goals.
Oh, let's do that.
Yeah, adopt the goals or, I'm gonna say approval of, so I would assume you vote.
Yes, sorry, thank you, I was already moving forward.
You ready?
We just did an informal nodding of that. Yeah, yeah, it's approved.
So we know what the outcome of the vote is?
Yes, we know what the outcome is. Okay, Julia, hit it.
Okay, so the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the goals as indicated for the 2015-16 school year.
All those in favor? Should we do all those in favor or do we have to rule call it?
I'll make a motion that we, we approve the board goals.
Okay, I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to Michael Genules for keeping us, keeping us honest up here.
And we have to do the workshop topics also.
I'll make a motion for-
Would you like me to read the recommendation?
That would, that would be helpful.
I'll do my best. The recommended-
Keep it together, everybody, right?
The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the workshop meeting topics as amended for 2015-16.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. Moving into new business, approval of CSE and CPSE recommendations.
Okay, the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the recommendations by the Committee on Special and Preschool Special Education as submitted.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion?
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving into a supplemental memorandum of agreement between us and the HAA. I'll let you read the-
Oh, thank you. It's all right, just bear with me. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the supplemental memorandum of agreement between the Board of Education and the Haldane Administrators Association dated September 24th, 2015, for the purpose of adding the following titles to the HAA agreement. Elementary school principal, middle school principal slash CIO and Director of Pupil Personnel Services and Innovative Instructional Practices. In addition, that the Board of Education authorizes the Board President and Superintendent to sign the supplemental memorandum of agreement on behalf of the district.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Can I ask a question? Does that mean this is permanent?
No, it's just that right now it's not in the contract and that's how they're being employed this year.
So, but there's nothing here that says it goes away if it doesn't-
Well, it's just adding the titles into the contract. It doesn't mean that the people will retain the positions, it means that they're just, it will be listed in the contract itself.
But does that mean the titles are always there, so we'll never have to do this again?
Yeah, if, if everything goes forward.
But does it mean that the titles don't always have to be filled?
Yes, they don't have to be filled.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Yeah, so just to be clear to everybody, we are not adding any positions here, this is simply-